All right, welcome to tonight's regular city council meeting Wednesday, May fourteenth, six P M. Meeting called to order. Madam Clerk, may I have roll call, please?
Yes, Marion.
Present.
Vice Americano.
Here.
Councilor Gonzalez.
Here.
Councilor Perez.
Here.
Councilor Gutierrez.
Here.
We have quorum.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I always forget, but I'm not gonna forget you this time. Mr. Garza, can you please step up or interpreter?
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, McFarland family, concierge, my alcalde familia. If you need translation services, I'm here. Si necesita introducción, aquí estoy. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Leading us in invocations, Councilmember Perez, please bow your head.
Good evening. As we gather here in this month of May, a time of growth, renewal and reflection, let us take a moment to ground ourselves in gratitude and purpose. We are thankful for the opportunity to serve our community, to make decisions with integrity and to work toward the common good. May we approach our task tonight with open minds, respectful hearts, and a spirit of collaboration. Let us be mindful of those in our city who are in need, and may our actions contribute to a more just, compassionate and thriving community for all. Grant us wisdom with our deliberations and unity in our efforts. In Jesus's name, amen.
Amen. Okay, can everybody please stand for the pledge allegiance? Our councilmember Gutierrez will be leading.
Hail to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilmember Perez and Gutierrez. Before I approve the agenda as to form, do I have a motion to amend the agenda to include a proclamation recognizing Community Development Week and also introducing Megan Snyder as our Community Development Director?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion by Vice Americano, second by Councilmember Perez. Madam Clerk, may I have roll call, please?
Mayorion.
Aye.
Vice Americano.
Aye.
Councilor Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilor Perez.
Aye.
Councilor Gutierrez.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Now, moving on to one of my favorite parts of our meetings, our pet of the week, pet of the month. We have some new people here attending our meeting. Maybe we'll have an adoption. Chief?
Unfortunately, the pet couldn't be with us, and that's actually the wrong picture.
Uh, no, they gave us another one thinking you guys were gonna bring that one, but it's okay. Yeah, cuz I was told that the other one got...
Adopted?
Adopted, so I was given a different one.
I'm out of the loop then.
So, which is good.
See?
Buttercup.
Yeah, me and Chief had a ongoing thing, but I'm glad it continues.
Yes, yeah. Anyway, Mayor and Honorable City Council, today we have Buttercup. She's a small, like, chihuahua terrier, three months old, very affectionate, and she's ready for adoption today. We'll waive all the fees if somebody stands up and said, "I will take her home today."
Oh, well, yeah.
Do it, do it. Follow your heart. Yes.
Are they here?
No, yeah.
Come on, they raised their hand. I saw it.
You're so close. That's where all, that's where all the energy is. Okay, well, tomorrow the dog will be ready for adoption too, and I'll make the same deal with you tomorrow. Okay.
There's four of you. Each could share it each week. Blaine back there as well. Oh, I'm missing him. Yes, all right. Well, thank you so much. Moving on to our presentations, introductions, and awards. Our first item is presentation of High School Interns Emerging Leaders Program. Ms. Serena McEwen, the floor is yours.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers and community. I'm honored to take a moment to recognize two exceptional high school interns who joined the city of McFarland this spring. These students have not only shown impressive initiative, but have also made meaningful contributions across multiple departments: Public Works, Finance, Community Development, and Administration. Throughout their time with us, they've supported projects ranging from city maintenance efforts, data organization, and have helped streamline some of our administrative workflows. Their positive attitude, their willingness to learn and professional demeanor far exceeded our expectations. It's truly been a pleasure having them as part of our team, and we're confident that their experience here has laid a strong foundation for their future careers. On behalf of the city of McFarland, thank you both for your hard work, and we wish you the very best in your continued educational and professional journeys. Please join me in welcoming and congratulating both Valeria Hernandez and Jesus Gomez. And I'll let them kinda introduce themselves, and they can, you want them right there?
Yeah.
Okay, if you wanna go over there, Valeria, you can just introduce yourself and what you've done, and just a little bit about you.
Hello, everyone. My name is Valeria Hernandez.
Yeah.
I'm not sure.
Yeah.
Um, I am a senior here at McFarland High School, and I have the pleasure of being an intern with the city. I want to begin by thanking everyone who has given me the opportunity to stand before you guys in the city. I want to express my sincere gratitude for the incredible internship experience I had at the city of McFarland. Thank you to Mayor Saul Layon, to Megan, to Bree, and to Diego, and everyone else. These past couple of months have been a complete blessing. I have always been a hardworking, determined individual who approaches every task with unwavering commitment. It has been my dream to have an office job, to surround myself with business executives, and to make a change for the community, whether it was through volunteering or simply doing good in school or to represent McFarland. This internship has made such a huge impact in my life. Not only has it opened new doors for me, but it has created friendships that I hope last a lifetime. During my time in this internship, I had the opportunity of helping community development with various tasks. I got to see the background of what it really takes to make events such as a great festival come to life, from gathering vendors to collecting artwork from talented, talented young individuals for, for the great festival art contest. I got to help with sending out letters for the grants department and helped creating videos for marketing. It has been a complete honor to work with these colleagues who have been, who have made this internship more than a learning experience. Working with the finance department, department has given me insight into the business aspects of McFarland. I have seen how much hard work they have put into making sure the community is running effectively. Shadowing the accountant clerks has showed me what working with the residents looks like. Every single one of these colleagues have been outstanding role models. Making, seeing them makes me more determined to accomplish my goals of majoring in Business Administration. This internship taught me life skills that I will apply to my future. Overall, I truly appreciate the time invested in my development. Thank you again for this amazing opportunity. Also, special thanks to Paul for allowing me to build connections and helping me throughout this internship. Thank you.
Hello, everyone. My name is Jesus Gomez, and I am a senior at McFarland High School. What drew me to this internship was, to be honest with all of you, I just had way too much free time on my hands, and what I, and my vision for my future was to become a civil engineer for a city, and that's what I'm currently going to do, is to enroll at San Jose State University as a civil engineer. And working with Public Works, like with Yurlese, Padre, and Adam, and the rest of the guys there, they're, they're, they taught me a lot, like, how, how roads need to be maintained, or how even like the slightest, um, I can't find the words. I didn't prepare myself for this. How like the, how like the slightest hiccups can like lead to like lawsuits with the city or stuff like that. It really did open my eyes to what to expect in the future if I do become a, an engineer for a city. And I just, I don't know, I think it was a wonderful experience, especially since I never really saw what, I never really paid attention to what the city really does for the community, living on what everyone here may call it, the TJ side of McFarland. And, and this, and this side of McFarland, San Jose, or like some rich side of California.
Me, San U.
Yeah.
Never heard of that. I'm from the east side. You're all true.
Yeah. Yeah, it really did open my eyes to like that the city really does care about both sides regardless of what the people may say, especially my parents. They, they, they sometimes, they, they really bad, bad mouth you guys. And working with the, with the city as an intern really showed me how, how much you guys really do care, and I really like to thank everyone for that. Thank you.
Thank you both. Thank you. Come on up.
Yeah, we'll get a picture.
Okay.
Students, outstanding, outstanding work. Valeria, I mean, it's just not me, it's, it's the council. We all supported this, and, and I'm, I'm glad. Jesus, you're very transparent and honest. I'll give you that one. You know what I mean? So, I don't know what happened when you get back home, but it's all good. But I really like your deliverance. Thank you so much for being the first interns and stuff, and knowing what you guys, you gals and guys forgot how expensive it is to maintain a road, especially, I wanna say prepaying wages, but I won't, I wanna, I won't bother unions with that. But anyways, but thank you so much for, for stepping up and being the first interns, and we're, we're gonna continue doing this cuz you guys are, are future, you know? And so you see just you touching the surface of what, what it, what it means, and what does it take to actually have a good balance between community engagement and the government side. So, but thank you so much. Council, does anybody have anything to add?
Um, I just, again, as an educator here in town, I just love the growth that the students do here. I remember Valeria being really young, and now she's getting ready for college. Great job, Valeria. Just, I think that this program is really good. We had talked about it for a few years, and then it's come to, you know, it's here now. So, I congratulate you for the job well done. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Perez. Ms. Gonzalez?
I think this internship program is something really essential. It, clearly it shows a lot of growth for you guys, and you're able to see from the inside out as opposed to a lot of people that see what happens to City Hall from the outside. As, as you voiced, you know, people have a lot to say, but it's until you actually work from the inside out till you actually see really what really happens. And so, thanks for, for clearing that out, you know? So, good job, and I hope whatever road you guys decide to take, it's a successful one. Thank you for your help.
Councilmember Gutierrez?
Well, I just wanna congratulate them, and both of them, I know them, I saw them grow up. I know, they, they know me. It's just good to know that they picked the two, two great candidates to be the first interns. Congratulations.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
I didn't get to meet you before this program, but I can tell there's a lot of growth in you, and that's, that's great. That's awesome to hear that McFarland isn't only opening opportunities for young kids to understand how businesses run or how cities or government is run, but it's also exciting to hear you guys want to pursue a degree and pursue a higher career, and maybe in the future come back and work for us. So, congratulations.
At a reduced cost. Yeah, we're tired of outsourcing our streets. Thanks to Yurlese, but thank you again.
Do you wanna do pictures?
Oh.
Okay.
We need a little. Arriba la llama.
You can take it on the phone too if you want. Ready, one, two, three.
We'll make it social media. We're becoming like the board of supervisors. I make some jokes, and all they give is proclamations. They don't do anything bad. I'll leave that alone. But anyways, it's always good to recognize. We're gonna start off with the city of McFarland proudly recognizes May twenty 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 five as Community Action Month. It's an honor of the Community Action Partnership of Kern as C, CAP-K, since its founding nineteen sixty-five. CAP-K has played a vital role in combating poverty, promoting self-sufficiency, and enhancing the well-being of our, of individual families throughout the Kern County. Though impact programs such as CAP-K, Food Bank, and Head Start in McFarland, CAP-K has demonstrated a commitment to uplifting communities. This proclamation serves as a tribute to their continued dedication and lasting contributions to the residents of McFarland and beyond. So, I'm gonna read the proclamation now. Then we have a couple of their, their boards here and, and members. So, Community Action Month, whereas Community Action Partnership of Kern was established in nineteen sixty-five and has made essential contributions to individuals and families across Kern County by creating economic opportunities and strengthening communities. And whereas, Community Action Partnerships of Kern addressing underlying causes of poverty elevates the effects and promotes dignity and self-sufficiency in the communities we serve. And whereas, Community Action Partnership of Kern delivered over twenty-two million pounds of food across Kern County in twenty twenty-four through CAP-K Food Bank. And whereas, Community Action of Kern operates a Head Start location in McFarland tending to children within the community and providing a Head Start to their education. And whereas, it's important of all citizens and residents to know that, that they understand the duties, responsibilities, hazards, and sacrifice of our law enforcement agency, and it's encouraged that all citizens joining us in honoring and recognizing our law enforcement officers. Now, therefore, better be complaint, proclaim that I Saul Layon, Mayor of the city of McFarland, on behalf of the McFarland City Council, do hereby proclaim May twenty twenty-fifth as Community Action Month in recognition of the hard work and dedication through the community. Now, I have four members here. We have Patrica, I don't wanna chop that up, Ram, Blaine, everyone who wants to come up.
Hi, everyone. Thanks for having us again. It's kind of an annual opportunity to come and share our successes with you all, especially through the collaboration with the city of McFarland. I'm joined today, my, my name is Patrica. I'm joined today with Blaine Hodge, as well as our board member Gina and Tiana from our outreach and marketing team. But, you know, just wanna reiterate the great partnership with the city of McFarland. Our agency has gone through some growth recently, so I'll take a moment to share that. We're roughly at twenty programs. We're a nonprofit entity. Our target really is low to moderate income families. We recently had a unique opportunity to have the California Veterans Assistance Foundation merge with us, and so the board proved that at the end of February, so effective in March. We now have veteran services, which is wonderful. So, we have veteran targeted housing as well as focus on housing essentially for HUD youth, which are individuals that are at risk of homelessness or homeless at the age of eighteen to twenty-four. So, we're excited to get into that space, cuz as you know, inventory for housing is really limited. So, some of the partnerships that we'll be telling you about in the next year or so will hopefully add to the inventory of housing. So, I'm gonna take a break here and introduce Blaine, who operates our food bank, and we'll tell you a little bit more about some of the partners that we have.
All right. Thanks for the proclamation, you all, and thanks for the invite. I did wanna just talk about just the amazing growth that's happened over the last few years. So, we have partners here, like Church of the Living Savior, that Family, Family Life Worship Center. The McFarland Resource Center is also a partner of ours, and more recently, Celebration Nation. They're the ones who do the big old distribution on Garzoli. I did wanna take a second to thank the folks standing behind me. I know that it can be a lot of work dealing with these big, giant, long lines that are blocking the streets and everything else, but, but you guys providing grace and assistance and support, that's you loving on them. So, I really do appreciate that. I've never gotten a call, you know, from anybody in McFarland saying they shut down one of the lines or anything like that. They're, they're always just doing their best to assist, and we really appreciate it. We talked about twenty-two million pounds of food that was moved earlier. Five hundred thousand of those pounds came to McFarland. It's huge. And just tons of people are served on a, a monthly basis through these five food champions essentially, right, that are saying, "You know what? It doesn't matter if I'm not getting paid to do this. I'm gonna get up every day and I'm gonna serve, I'm gonna put others' people's needs before my own," and, and just realize that those needs are as valuable as my own, which is, um, which is crazy important. I live here in McFarland, so I, I try and go hard for this place, I do. And, and it's really, it's really shown, because when I started, it, there was just this huge sense of urgency around the fact that we weren't hitting the metrics that needed to be hit for the amount of pounds of food, like the ratio of, of food going to the families that are food insecure. Now, I can happily say that we are, but we're doing it together. We're better together. And, yeah, just thank you so much.
I just wanna say that it's an honor to receive this recognition. It's an honor to receive this recognition, and thank you, the city of McFarland, for your support.
Round of applause for the... I didn't know he lived here until... Okay, moving on. I'm gonna adjust this. Instead of, we'll do, obviously, it's our, our new Community, Community Development Director. I got a couple of words. Then I'll, I'll start with, obviously, it was Economic Development Week. We had Kern and D.C. here. Then we'll do the proclamation, but, no, I, I think we'll start with introducing Megan, then, then we start off. Come on down, Megan. So, we're excited to welcome our new Community Development Director, Megan Snyder, whose energy, focus, and drive has already made a strong impression in just a few short months. While her journey brought her here after leaving another city, I'm not gonna mention the city, but we truly believe it's her loss and our gain. She brings a wealth of experience to the role, but what stands out most about her is that she has a non-nonsense approach, where a non-nonsense approach, she doesn't rely on standard answers. She gives honest, clear responses and takes action. That kind of leadership, exactly what we need in this community to continue the growth and moving forward. I wanna, between her and Paul and her staff, we need to accomplish our biggest challenge, and that is bringing commercial to the city, bringing the industry, bringing jobs, bringing the tax sales so that we can continue paying our police officers, our fire services, essential services that we need. So, and with that, I would, here's Megan to introduce herself.
Thank you. All right. Thank you, Honorable Mayor and Council. I really appreciate the introduction and this opportunity. I definitely hit the ground running in McFarland, not the McFarland USA kind, but taking on quite a few notable projects since, when I came on in mid-February. I have a world-class team, some of which are here this evening, and have enjoyed moving projects forward alongside them. Many projects will pay dividends for years to come, most of which McFarland has never seen before, but are very needed to address operational efficiency and in the divisions within my purview. Some of the most notable throughout this current fiscal year is issuing four hundred and nine building permits with valuations totaling twelve point five million dollars. Implementing solar app to meet regulatory compliance, late-stage development of online permitting for project tracking, online payments, and to overall improve efficiency and transparency. We've completed two annexations, coordinated and facilitated the city's first great festival, processed multiple TUPs, final maps, parcel maps, site plans, and lot line adjustments, some sizable grants to include funding a truck and trailer for DOI enforcement, complete street projects, and successfully grew and maintained social media engagement across all departments. That, that section as well has been able to introduce the cold case running, unsolved homicide series that's continuing to persist this week in McFarland, and the unsolved homicide database. And the, the most current that will be live before the end of the week is reintegrating the real estate locator to help for potential development for commercial properties. A little bit about me, I have combined, a combined experience with both private sector business and local municipality leadership, which gives me a unique viewpoint. I don't shy away from hard work or challenges, but I absolutely love on working on projects that create a better, safer place to work and live. I live for my other half, who's sitting in the back over here, our five kids and my family, fully obsessed with our fur animals, our fur children, canine doggo, which is my husband's partner, as well as our German shepherd pound puppy, Rainy. I live by the quote, hustle and heart will set you apart, and I use that as a guide for myself and for my team. I am passionate about helping people and serve on several nonprofit leadership teams in my personal time, and working in underserved communities, as the mayor likes to call it, providing opportunities for growth. My favorite thing is curating community events that make lasting memories, some of which you'll be hearing about very soon. I truly appreciate the opportunity. McFarland is on a solid growth trajectory with a supportive and proactive mayor and council, and strong city leadership with Diego at the helm. This combination of support, the incredible team that I have, paired with clear growth objectives, I truly believe we are part of the gateway to growth, and I can't wait to see what is ahead for McFarland. Thank you all again.
Council, any comments? Start with Ms. Perez.
Yes, thank, thank you, Mayor. As you say to Megan, there's a lot of great things happening here in Mc... As you say to Megan, there's a lot of great things happening here in McFarland, and thank you for joining our team and making those events even better for us. We welcome you with open arms, and I see that your team is, we're alongside you, and they're always there for you. So thank you again.
Ms. Gutierrez.
I just want to thank you for everything that you do for the city. Very new here, but hopefully with your expertise, you could help the city grow.
Thank you. Counsel, Mayor Gonzalez.
Almost the same thing as what they said. I'm just looking forward to what you have to bring to McFarland, as you see that McFarland is in need of a lot of different things in different areas, so just welcome to the team and looking forward to what you have to bring. Thank you.
Vice Mayor.
Just welcome to the team, Megan. Heard a lot of great things, so let's get, let's get running here. There's a lot going on. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel. I want to give, too, I want to give, I know, I know I always give our attorney a bunch of stuff, but I want to give him some credit, because he vouched, and he basically said, hey, this is an individual that's going to do well for the city. Tend to believe him the majority of the time, but you know, he was right on this one. He patted a thousand. But, and also, since you guys love animals, I got, we got Buttercup.
No, I don't think Buttercup would have worked too well with the canine doggo, but, you know, we'll keep working on it.
All right, all right. Okay, now I want to read this proclamation. Whereas more than 100,000 economic developments or related professionals worldwide are committing, are committed to creating, retaining, and expanding their top-tier opportunities that facilitate long-term equitable community growth. And whereas the economic development professional cultivates thriving neighborhoods, champions sustainability and resiliency, boosts economic prosperity, enhances quality of life, and builds a robust tax base. Whereas economic development professionals operate through a diverse economic environmental environment, including rural, suburban, and urban settings, local, state, and national governments, public-private partnerships, chambers of government, institution of higher education among many similar organizations and associations. Whereas economic development professionals serve as stewards bridging connections between community stakeholders, such as residents, business leaders, elected officials, industry, executives, and educational administrators, to collaborate in promoting job creation, community investment, infrastructure advancement, and the optimistic future. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that I, Saúl Ayon, Mayor of the City of McFarland, on behalf of the McFarland City Council, do hereby recognize Economic Development Week and the contributions that economic development professionals make toward our economic progress, and remind individuals of the importance of their celebration when celebrate, which expanding opportunities, bettering lives, and moving society forward. And I tried to say that a couple of times, but thank you, thank you. Round of applause. Can you bring up the team? And before I start with, whereas, I want to actually take some time to keep on celebrating and recognizing our police department, who continues to demonstrate their dedication to protecting and serving McFarland by actively investigating crime, making arrests, and holding criminals accountable. To support their efforts, we, us, the council, have supported and invested in their critical tools, such as a drone program, canine units, a canine unit, body worn cameras, new patrol vehicles, license plate recognition cameras. These resources, along with a fair compensation, I would say, right, a fair compensation salary, help ensure officers can do their job effectively and safely. While no police department is perfect, our officers are committed to making McFarland a safer, better place for all who live here. Their work reflects the drive to improve our community, and they do so with the full support of McFarland City Council. I'm proud to have our Police Chief Knox here to accept the proclamation after I read it as a symbol of our continued partnership and shared commitment to building a safer and stronger community. And I'll read the proclamation, and then I'll have Chief Knox come up here and say some kind words about his staff and the council. But anyways, whereas in 1962, President Kennedy proclaimed May 15th as National Peace Officers' Memorial Day, and the calendar week in which May 15 falls as National Police Week. And whereas National Police Week is a collaborative effort of many organizations dedicated to honoring America's law enforcement community and giving special recognition to those law enforcement officers who have injured, who have been injured and lost their lives in the line of duty for the safety and protection of others. And whereas law enforcement officers strive to maintain the safe environment for all, often while facing significant challenges and dangers, and our community recognizes the important work and sacrifice officers make each day to protect those and around McFarland. And whereas the members of McFarland Police Department recognize their duty to serve the people by safeguarding life and property, by protecting against violence and disorder, and by protecting the innocent against deception and the weak against oppression. And whereas it's important for all citizens to know and residents and understand the duties and responsibilities and hazards and sacrifices of all the law enforcement agencies, and it's encouraged that all the citizens join us honoring and recognizing our law enforcement officers. Now therefore, I, Saúl Ayon, Mayor of the City of McFarland, on behalf of the McFarland City Council, do hereby recognize May 11 to the 17, 2025, as National Police Week in the City of McFarland. And I have Chief Knox come up here, please, and accept this proclamation.
Thank you, Mayor Ayon and City Council, for the recognition for today and this week, and I want to accept it on behalf of the McFarland Police Department, and thank you for your recognition of all these, the hard work that the officers here behind me do to keep their community safe on a regular basis. I, I want to address one thing that is thrown around quite a bit in our society today, and that's the word hero. But when you look behind me, you're definitely going to see a few heroes. Each one of these men and women routinely put on a badge, gun, a vest, walk out their door every night, not knowing what kind of evil they're going to face, not knowing if they're going to walk home at the end of the night. So thank you for that recognition, and God bless you all.
Round of applause. All right, here we go. We're moving on. Moving on to, we got one more. Now moving on to our next proclamation, with the official proclamation of May 4th through May 10th, as Municipal Clerks Week. We take this opportunity to recognize and honor the essential work of our municipal clerks. As some of the longstanding public servants, they play a crucial role in maintaining transparency, connecting the government with the people, and ensuring the smooth operations of the city functions. Our clerks serve with the professionalism impartiality and the deep commitment to public service. They are trusted link between the residents, elected officials, and government agencies, often working quietly but tirelessly behind the scenes, whether managing records, supporting public meetings, or guiding residents through civic, a civic process. They're also steady hands that keep our city on track. We are grateful for the dedication and proud, and proud to celebrate their contributions to bringing McFarland during this special week. So we have one of our city clerk here, Erica, and we have other city, other clerks that are obviously not here, but I want to give a round of applause to Erica, our city clerk. She has to deal with not department heads, but city council, mayor, chief of police, well, sometimes, but other people, but thank you, Erica, and there's other clerks as well that I don't want to forget to mention, but deputies, yes, deputy clerks. But anyways, I'll read the proclamation now. Whereas the office of the municipal clerk, a time, manner, and the vital part of local government exists throughout the world, and whereas the office of municipal clerk is the oldest among public servants, and whereas the office of municipal clerk provides a link between citizens, the local governing bodies, and agency of the government at other levels. And whereas municipal clerks have pledged to ever be mindful of their neutrality and impartiality, rendering equal service to all, whereas the municipal clerk serves as an information center on functions of local government and community. And whereas municipal clerks continues to strive to improve the administration of the affairs of the office of municipal clerk through participation in education programs, seminars, workshops, and the annual meetings of the state provincial and county and international provincial organizations. And whereas the most appropriate that we recognize the accomplishments of the office of the municipal clerk. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that I, Saúl Ayon, Mayor of the City of McFarland, on behalf of the McFarland City Council, do hereby proclaim May 4th through the May 10th as a municipal clerks week. We'll just extend it to the whole month, you know, since we kind of missed it, so. But Ms. Delacruz, do you want to come up and say a couple of words?
Sure.
Counsel, any comments, concerns? We'll start with Ms. Gonzalez. Any comments? I want to say concerns at this time.
Just, um...
Well, just for Erica, thank you for your hard work and dedication. Your efforts are greatly appreciated and do not go unnoticed. Your commitment and passion shine through everything you do. Please know that your dedication and your determination are recognized, and thank you for being such a vital part of our team.
Thank you. Gutierrez, Ms. Gutierrez.
I just want to thank you, Erica, for helping me on this new role that I have, and everybody else, but thank you for everything that you do.
Thank you. Counsel, Mayor Perez.
As always, thank you, Erica. You're always very, I can't even think right now. Yes, helpful, and you do everything with a smile. Thank you.
Vice Mayor.
Well, it's not just about Erica, but tonight Erica's here, so thank you, Erica, for your great, for the great things you do for us, the city council, for me personally. I know there's a lot of times that, you know, where I'm asking for things and you have other jobs that need to be done, including other events that we put together. But also to all our clerks here in the City of McFarland, thank you for everything you do. You're great, it's, you know, every department runs smoothly, and it's not always the managers doing it, it's the behind the scenes, the clerks. Thank you for all that. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Don't forget our deputy clerk as well.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Honorable Mayor, members of the city council. It's been an awesome time in this role. I've enjoyed it, wearing multiple hats and working with all of you guys. I'm really blessed to, you know, you guys are all amazing, and I just want to say thank you so much. And also thank you, shout out to Paul, because he's, he's been so helpful from the onboarding process, and I don't think I would have learned this much without him. So thank you, guys.
All right, round of applause. All right, that ends proclamation week and month, I think. Okay, moving on, no department reports, moving on to consent agenda. Consent agenda consists of items that is staff's opinion are routine and non-controversial. These items are approved in one motion unless a council member or member of the public requests to remove a particular item. Is there anybody from the public that would like to discuss, remove a particular item from the, from the consent agenda? Seeing none. Anybody from the council that would like to discuss or remove a particular item from the consent agenda?
No.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve the consent, consent agenda?
Motion.
Second. Motion by Counsel, Mayor Perez, second by Vice Americano. Madam Clerk, may I have roll call, please?
Mayor Ayon.
Aye.
Vice Americano.
Aye.
Counsel, Mayor Gonzalez.
Aye.
Counsel, Mayor Perez.
Aye.
Counsel, Ms. Gutierrez.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Moving on to public hearings. Approval Resolution Number 2025-46, a resolution of the City of Council, the City of McFarland, California, amending and/or approving the final engineer report regarding landscaping lighting assessment District Number One, and the levy and collection of annual assessments related therefore to fiscal year 2025, 2026. City Manager Diego Vidal Montes.
Honorable Mayor and Council, good evening. The proposed action approves Resolution Number 2025-46, finalizing the engineer's report and authorizing the levy and collection of assessments for lighting and landscape District Number One for fiscal year 2526. This follows the city council's earlier adoption of resolutions initiating the proceedings and setting a public hearing. The engineer's report, prepared by Willden Financial Services, details the district boundaries, improvements, and annual maintenance budget of $399,598, and the method of assessment, which remains within the allowable maximum rate, including inflation adjustments. Assessments will be collected through the property tax bills to fund the ongoing maintenance and operation of the district. Adoption of this resolution formally, formalizes the levy for the upcoming fiscal year. And with that, I'm open to any questions that council or the public may have.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Vidal Montes. I'm going to open it up to the public at 6:44. Anybody from the public have any questions, concerns regarding this, this resolution? Seeing none, I'm going to close public comment at 6:44. Counsel, do we have any questions, concerns regarding this resolution? I'll start with Ms. Gutierrez.
I have no questions.
Ms. Perez.
None, thank you, Mayor.
Counsel, Mayor Gonzalez.
No.
Vice Mayor.
None.
I have no questions or concerns. Do I have a motion to approve the resolution?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Vice Americano, second by Counsel, Mayor Perez. Madam Clerk, may I have roll call, please?
Mayor Ayon.
Aye.
Vice Americano.
Aye.
Counsel, Mayor Gonzalez.
Aye.
Counsel, Mayor Perez.
Aye.
Counsel, Ms. Gutierrez.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Moving on to item 19, approval of Resolution Number 2025-47, resolution of the City Council, the City of McFarland, California, ordering the levy and collection of assessments within the landscaping and lighting assessment District Number One for fiscal year 202526. Mr. Vidal Montes.
Honorable Mayor and Council, now that the previous resolution had been approved to, to approve the final engineer's report and levy, this resolution, as it reads, it orders, formally orders a levy and collection of assessments that were calculated in that engineer's report for the lighting and landscaping assessment District Number One for the upcoming fiscal year. And again, I'm happy to answer any questions, council or the public may have.
Thank you. I'm going to open it up to, for public hearing for the public. Anybody have questions, concerns regarding this resolution? I opened it and closed it at 6:45. I'm going to open it to the council, I'm going to circle back. I'll start with Ms. Counsel, Mayor Gonzalez.
No, I have no questions. Thank you.
Counsel, Mayor Gutierrez.
No questions.
Counsel, Mayor Perez.
None.
Vice Mayor.
No questions.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the resolution?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Counsel, Mayor Gonzalez, second by Vice Americano. Madam Clerk, may I have roll call, please?
Mayor Ayon.
Aye.
Vice Americano.
Aye.
Counsel, Mayor Gonzalez.
Aye.
Counsel, Mayor Perez.
Aye.
Counsel, Ms. Gutierrez.
Aye.
Which, motion passes.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Moving on to administrative agenda, approval of Resolution 2025-42, a resolution of the City Council of McFarland, approving the employment agreement with Adrian Olmos, Captain, or we should say Captain Adrian Olmos. Go ahead, Ms. Gutierrez.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Council. Staff recommends approving an updated employment agreement with Captain Adrian Olmos. Some of the key changes include increasing the annual salary from $105,000 annually to $110,500 annually, based on performance and market competitiveness. In addition, adding a $1,200 annual uniform allowance, which aligns with comparable positions, and the total additional cost of $6,700 annually will be absorbed within the police department's existing budget. And I'm open to any questions.
Okay. I'm going to open up to the public for any questions, concerns regarding this employment agreement. Okay, I'm going to open up to, um, the public for any questions, concerns regarding this employment agreement. Seeing none, I'm going to close public comment, I'm going to bring it back to the council, I'll start with Mr. Councilmember Gutierrez.
I have no questions.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
No, I have no questions.
Councilmember Perez?
None, thank you.
Vice Americano?
No question.
Okay, um, I have no comments, I, I know he just left, I wanted to ask him some questions, but I'm, I'm good. Chief, you have anything to add?
Captain Adrian Olmos has been integral in, in achieving the goals that we have, uh, set and achieved throughout the time we've been here. His expertise in training, use of force, and, and field training programs has been, uh, needed at the very least of what I could express, so. Uh, one of the issues that we fell into here is our field training manual hadn't been certified since twenty-ten, and he had to write, completely rewrite the field training program. So just given one example of his expertise helping this department and this city achieve the goals of, of the police department.
Thank you Chief, I was going to say the same thing, but you beat me to it, so, but thanks for, thanks for that, that assessment and the experience that Captain Olmos has from his prior employment, but it was definitely needed here, do I have a motion to approve the resolution?
Motion?
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Perez, second by Vice Americano, Madam Clerk, may I have roll call, please?
Mayor Ayon.
Aye.
Vice Americano.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilmember Perez.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gutierrez.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, now moving on to item twenty-one, approval of resolution twenty twenty-five, forty-five, a resolution of the City Council, the City of McFarland, approving the additional one police corporal position to the police department staffing allocation, Ms. McEwen.
Hello again, staff recommends approval of adding one additional police corporal position to strengthen supervision and leadership within the McFarland Police Department. Some of these key points include the corporal role supports investigations, field training and coverage during sergeant absences, this addition addresses increased operational demands and improved shift coverage. The estimated annual cost ranges from sixty-five thousand and fifty-six dollars and eleven cents to eighty-three thousand, two hundred and seventy-six dollars and fifty-three cents, depending on staff placement, and will be funded through the department's current budget. And I'm open to any questions.
Okay, I'm going to open up to the public, anybody have questions, concerns regarding this item? Seeing none, I'm going to close it to the public, council, do we have any questions, concerns, we'll start with Ms. Gonzalez.
No.
Councilmember Gutierrez?
No questions.
Councilmember Perez?
None, thank you.
Vice Americano?
No question.
Okay, um, just a quick question, this is the, the, the same, added, it's an added position, it's an added position, right?
Yes.
Okay, perfect, and that's pretty much for helping with the, obviously the investigations and different things and et cetera from Chief's staff report. Okay, perfect, do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion by Vice Americano, second by Vice, uh, by Councilmember Perez, Madam Clerk, may I have roll call, please?
Mayor Ayon.
Aye.
Vice Americano.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilmember Perez.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gutierrez.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay, I'm, I'm moving on to item twenty-two, update list of council members on subcommittees and special district committees. City clerk, uh, Dela Cruz?
Good afternoon, Honorable Mayor and members of the city council, I come before you to present the current list of city council's subcommittees and the delegates presently assigned to each, city staff respectfully request your input on any revisions or updates regarding the delegates listed for each subcommittee. With the recent addition of a new council member, this also presents an opportunity to consider whether the council would like to appoint him to any of the existing subcommittees. Your feedback will assist in ensuring that each committee has a designated members and is properly structured to support the ongoing work and priorities of the city council.
Yeah, yeah, I just want to make sure that, um, well, some of these, some of these, uh, subcommittees, they're elected positions, so we can remove somebody.
Yeah, yeah.
Have somebody to alternate, and since we're already like almost in the middle of the year, and I'm just going to basically, we're going to replace, uh, Councilmember Gutierrez, place him instead of, uh, Mr. Ayon's, uh, positions, so first current county, current council government, uh, primary is obviously, uh, me as the mayor and the alternate Maria Perez. Current in DC, it'll be, always be me, and then, uh, I'm a board member, then Rick will be, uh, Conno, but then we also have alternates, Paul Saldana to attend.
Okay.
Primary, uh, for San Joaquin Valley Air Pollution Control District, it would be, we'll have Anita Gonzalez as primary, and then alternate would be, uh, Martin Gutierrez.
Okay.
Delano, Delano mosquito abatement, it will still be Ricardo O'Connell, because he was elected. Pozo Creek, the, uh, Pozo Creek will still remain Anita Gonzalez, I know they have like a meeting or two a year. Uh, current local agency formation, LAFCO, uh, I'll still, I'll be primary, and then, uh, alternate will be Maria Perez. Public Policy and Finance Committee will still be me and, and Ms. Anita Gonzalez. Public Safety Committee, I'm going to make an adjustment there, I'm, I'm going to have myself, and, uh, Martin Gutierrez. Qual, uh, Quality Alive, uh, it's going to be, uh, Maria Perez and Ricardo O'Connell. Ad Hoc Committee will still be, uh, me and, uh, Maria Perez. Uh, Cannabis Committee would be, um, anybody want to take my place? Okay, no. Okay. Whenever something comes up. Okay, Cannabis Committee will be Ricardo O'Connell and Maria Perez.
Okay. Sounds good then.
Uh, we'll come back the following year and make the appropriate changes.
Okay, sounds good then, thank you.
Yeah, well, now, any questions, concerns regarding, uh, uh, council as far as if they can attend or the positions that were appointed? Anyone?
No.
Okay, I'm going to open it up to the, the public, anybody have questions, concerns regarding the appointments? Seeing none? Okay. We don't, we don't actually vote on it, so it's just basically appointments. Thank you so much, Erica, for letting us know, now I'm going to, now I'm going to open it up to, uh, that ends our administrative agenda, moving on to public comment. Members of the public wishing to address the council about any item on the agenda that's not on the agenda, so at this time, speakers are limited to two minutes for each person. Fifteen minutes total will be allowed for one, uh, any one subject, please state your name and address for the record prior to making presentation. Madam Clerk, do we have anybody for public comment?
Yes, we do, it's Nicole Villaruz.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of city council, my name is Nicole Villaruz. I'm the local government affairs representative for PG&E, you might have received emails from me, um, usually when there's a storm coming, I try to send you guys updates of weather that's happening. Um, but I wanted to take the time, I was in town today and attended the West Kern Economic Alliance, met the mayor there, some members of your staff. Um, and since I was in town, I thought I'd stay and meet you all at city council. Um, I do want to take the time to say that I've met with Diego, I'm your city manager in the past, um, he usually keeps me updated on McFarland's needs. PG&E only services on the west side of ninety-nine, Southern California Edison's on the east side, so I do my best to stay, um, on top of any services that are needed. Um, your city manager informed me that we have a project that's going to be happening on the west side, um, of City McFarland, so I've, will keep my attention on that. I've also, um, got to meet Megan today and exchange information with her, um, but I just wanted to introduce myself since I was in town, um, and say hello. And Erica has my contact information that she can share with all of you, if there's anything PG&E related, um, with our services or questions that you might have, please don't hesitate to contact me, keep my phone on me at all times, um, and I'm a really good texter, if that's the way that you like to talk. Um, I know sometimes it's kind of hard to get people on the phone now, but I'm a really good texter, especially if it's just a quick question, more than happy to do that. And I'm also free to set up any time if you want me to come to town and have coffee with you, um, to give you an update of what's going on, um, regarding PG&E and any services in McFarland. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much, thank you, is there anyone else?
No, that's it.
Public, is there anybody else that wants public comment? Seeing none? Okay, I'm going to close public comment, uh, do we have any council comments? Starting with Mr. Gutierrez?
I just want to. Yeah. No questions.
Okay, seeing none, reports from the city council committees and special district meetings, Kern Economic Development Corporation, Kern in DC, I'll have Mr. Saldana.
Yes, uh, Mayor, members of the council, the Board of Directors met, uh, two weeks ago, and, uh, they have initiated their strategic planning process. The, uh, one thing I, I know the council will, uh, be pleased with is they did, uh, get a, um, hear the audit report, and they had a clean audit, uh, for this last fiscal year, so. Uh, the, during the summer, they'll be participating in the strategic planning event, and this will be for the next four-year cycle for the, uh, for the Board of Directors.
Yeah, do you want to, well, that was the, the last meeting, but do you want to discuss what came today and stuff like that?
Yes, uh, um, so today we were, uh, hosting the West Kern Economic Alliance, which is the, uh, basically all of the cities, communities, uh, on the western side of the, of the range, uh, if you will, uh, this is our third meeting. Uh, previously it was held in Taft and in Wasco, and so it was our, uh, opportunity to host it, and of course, we hosted it during Economic Development Week. We had, uh, several members from the private sector, uh, board of Kern EDC and, um, who, who attended, in fact, there were more private sector folks that came to visit, uh, McFarland today than, uh, public sector from the neighboring cities, in fact, I think the only other city, uh, to, you know, be represented was Bakersfield, as well as Kern County. Uh, but it was a, a good event, we had, uh, a, a lot of good, uh, feedback and a lot of good, uh, connections there.
Perfect, perfect, just keep on advertising our annexation and our commercial availability, uh, council, do you have any questions, concerns for Paul?
No.
All right, moving on to council statements and reports, on their own initiative, council members may make a brief announcement or a brief report on their own activities. In addition, council members may ask a question of staff or the public for clarification on any matter, provide reference to staff or other resources for information. Alternatively, request staff to report to the city council or later meeting concerning any matter. Furthermore, the city council or any member thereof may take action to direct staff to place a matter of business on a future agenda. And we'll start with Mr. Councilmember Gutierrez.
Uh, I just want to thank everybody for coming here, um, it's been a great first full meeting. I just happy to see that we were able to recognize our interns, and we had a lot of proclamations today that, um, it helps the city. And I also want to thank all of you guys that helped me the other day for the onboarding, thank you so much, that was a lot of help. And also want to thank the police for keeping our city still safe, I feel safe, like they said, on the east side of town, and thank you for we.
Thank you, uh, Councilmember Gutierrez, uh, Councilmember Gonzalez, please.
Um, just everyone, thank you for coming, and, um, the proclamations, uh, thank you for all the hard work that you do, the police department. Um, you really don't go unnoticed and grateful for everything that you do to keep our community safe. Nicole, thank you for looking out for our city, really appreciate it, and the fact that you took your time to be here with us this evening, thank you, and thank you everyone for coming, thank you.
Thank you, Ms., uh, Councilmember Gonzalez, Councilmember Perez?
Thank you, Mayor, yes, thank you, uh, everybody for your attendance, um, we did, I looked at the, at the agenda and I was like, oh my goodness, this is going to be a long meeting, but it, it turned out to be real, a really nice meeting, uh, the proclamations, um, the youth that, you know, civic engagement is really important. It's, it's really good to get them, uh, started young, uh, because they are our future, so that, um, thank you for setting up that program. Um, also, I want to say that I've been in education for many, many years, I started in Early Mart, then to Delano, then made it back home to McFarland. And so I remember Nicole when she was in high school, um, so it's good to see you now that you are, you know, flourishing as an adult, um, thank you for being here. And, um, I just want to say that as far as our, um, social media, um, it's looking really good, uh, Jordan, thank you, um, I've wanted to say in the past, thank you, but I've never had that opportunity, well, I have had it, but I haven't done it. You're just out there, um, you know, taking all those pictures, um, so that's it, and I think, uh, in the next couple of weeks, we have graduations coming up. Um, so we're going to be pretty busy in the next couple of weeks as a school district.
Thank you, thank you, Councilmember Perez, uh, Vice Americano?
Yes, I wanted to congratulate everybody who was, uh, for the proclamations today, uh, amazing work, um, our youth, um, I just want to answer, I want to kind of bring that comment made by one of our, our, our interns, and, and it's great that he notices that this community, this council, this city, the management, everyone, we value the city all at, at the same level, and we respect everyone at the same level, there is no difference between east side and west side, I grew up in the east, I think we all did. So, um, community action partnership, thank you for, for everything you do for our community, I know there's a lot of activity coming in our, in our city, a lot of people are, that struggle, uh, do take advantage of that opportunity, and that's amazing, um, the growth of our city, our police department, um, I, I mean, I can never say thank you, because just like Chief said, there's so many heroes, and they're all unsung, you know, we, we forget sometimes the great work they do, you know, unfortunately, I believe it was last year when that activity happened at the high school, we saw them running towards that, not knowing what was ahead of them, and it, it's that opportunity that we get to see what they do for us, for the community, for, for the residents. Our clerks, thank you for all your, your, your great work, and, um, tire management team, thank you for everything you do, I know sometimes we forget, but you guys are part of all that, and you guys are getting calls even late at night, thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor, uh, just want to start off with comments, and I've never, I've heard it once or twice, Nicole, thank you for saying west side, not whatever they call this side and that side. Uh, to me, McFarland is McFarland, I don't, the, the bridge doesn't separate anything, but, um, as we move forward as a city and taking over the organization of all the festivals here in the city throughout the year, such as the Fourth of July, and every, the Christmas parade and other events, we, we, we must focus on accountability, sec- security measures, and ensuring we don't put the city in a position for a liability, or to be liable. Uh, these events are a reflection of our community, we must ensure that everything is handled with the utmost care and professionalism to protect our residents and our city. Additionally, I attended the Parks and Rec Recreation Meeting to discuss the, the status of our recreation services. Just to clarify, a lot of people that have lived here for a long time might not know that it's a separate entity, it's a different program, we're not in charge of the Parks and Rec, and the city gets, I don't want to say blamed, but things regarding our pool, our, our sports, sporting events, and every time I have to address the issues, like, okay, they, they have their own board, they have their own director, um, I don't know the rules behind how long ago it's been like that. It's basically they receive taxes from our residents, or us that, that pay, that pay taxes here to have those services provided for our kids, and not to discourage, but to develop our kids, we, I've had some, personally, I've had some, uh, issues for the last couple of years. I didn't want to bring it to light, but it's come to that point where it needs to be exposed as far as, uh, what needs to be done, and it's called transparency. If you look at our agenda, and I brought this up a couple of times, and people are going to say, oh, you keep on bringing it up, because somebody has to do it, because if nobody else does it for our kids, who else is going to do it? Uh, this is a problem that I have, you know, our pool hasn't been available for our kids, we got to, uh, be in that pool, and it's been almost five, six, seven years. Can't keep on blaming COVID. Uh, our sports, our numbers have fallen, because we're putting kids, five-year-olds with ten-year-olds, who, what parent wants to put their five-year-old with the ten-year-old in T-ball or basketball or football? That's where they're going to Delano, Wasco, so there's got to be some accountability. And so I attended that meeting, and I asked questions, not as a mayor, but as a, as a citizen here, and I asked, I asked the board, what have you done? Because they could always come back and blame the mayor, or they could blame this, or they can blame that, but the, the difference is that, if you look at our agenda, we have transparency, we, you could look at our documentation, we have a hundred and sixty pages on this agenda. If you're looking at the city Parks and Rec, they have one page. Old bills, new bills, does that really say where, where the money, where the money's going? So, this is why people don't like sometimes my approach, but my approach is. So, this is why people don't like sometimes my approach, but my approach is very simple. It's direct, I call balls and strikes, and if you have nothing to hide or, uh, show us. And, and a lot of people don't, don't like that, because they, they either are afraid not to get re-elected or elected, but at, at the same time, at the same time, we gotta provide the services that we had to our children. We have a bigger city now. We should have more resources. We're paying a lot more than a lot of other cities in our taxes, and we don't have those services, and the city doesn't control that. But I just wanna clarify for everybody that's hearing, that it's two different entities. And m-my thought process is like, we gotta go ask those questions. If some people are, consider hard questions, I don't, I don't think so. If they wanna come and ask for anything from the city, they're more than welcome. We're an open book. I can't speak for the, the prior administrations, but, uh, at the end of the day, what we're trying to do here, as, as far as me and, and some other council members here, is trying to do better for our kids and for the community. Cause like I've brought this up before, how do unincorporated cities such as Early Mart, Lamont, Lost Hills have a public pool, and we don't? We do, but it's not working. So, we gotta keep on, my, my stance is, we gotta keep on asking those que, those questions. And if nobody wants to expose it, well, at least somebody's doing it. But anyways, the next, uh, school board, the next Parks and Rec, uh, Rec, uh, Rec meeting is May twenty-eighth at five-thirty. I expect, uh, some of our residents and citizens to come and ask those questions, uh, cause I'll be there. So, anyways, um, I, I, I wanna, uh, I wanna end with, I wanna take a, a moment to thank all our city staff. I know we're not perfect. We're still, uh, going through some of these challenges and obstacles, but the city, the residents are seeing the difference. They're seeing the difference. Some stuff being, uh, addressed, from the roads to our water, to our public safety, to everything. I mean, we didn't create this mess, but we're fixing it as a team. Uh, but your efforts are truly appreciated. Uh, so, everybody that came today, thank you for coming. It shows the interest, the involvement from the community, the residents. Uh, we'll put this, we'll put this together sooner or later. Well, the light is shining right now, so, um, I just wanna thank everybody that, that, uh, that attended, and let's keep on working together to make McFarland what it should be. And with that, uh, this, this closes our regular meeting before we go into closed session, but I wanna thank everybody for coming. Nathan?
During closed session, council discussed item number twenty-three. It's a conference of real property negotiations pursuant to Government Code Section five four nine five six point eight. The property is APN two oh one zero three one dash zero four in McFarland. The agency negotiator is Paul Saldana, the Economic Development Manager, and Diego Villamontes, the City Manager, and the negotiating parties are to be determined under negotiation as the price.
Thank you. Uh, that ends our regular council meeting. Thank you. Have a good night. Stay safe.